So first, we have a presentation by Jason Booth. Jason, welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's an honor to be here. And I've been here two years now at the YMCA and feels like about two weeks. So but as you'll see in the presentation, just a tidbit of the exciting stuff we have going on and what we've been doing for a long time in this community, specifically the last two years. First question is a lot I get a lot is what is YMCA? What are we? We're just you're just a gym and you're just a pool, correct? No, no, there's a lot more than that. We cast a very wide net. And our mission, though, is to help community members live their live lives to the fullest potential by putting Christian principles into practice, programs about healthy spirit, mind, and body. What does that mean? Well, it means a lot. And as you can see, more than more than just a gym and a swim, yes, we have that. People come to the YMCA to work out. They come to the YMCA to get swim lessons, swim team. That's a huge part of what we do. In addition to that, youth development, we have childcare. We have foreign national programs. I'll get into that a little bit more in just a bit. With some of the expansion we started just this fall. We have our preschool. We have summer camps, youth sports. We have STEAM education programs, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math in the evenings. We're about health and wellness as well. We have chronic disease prevention programs, such as Delay the Disease, Parkinson's, Live Strong for Cancer Survivors. A lot of healthy living initiatives. In addition, we have community engagement is really what we're about. YMCA does not come into a community and say, here's what we're going to do with the community. It needs to take a pause and say, what does the community need? And that's where YMCA fills needs. And that is in many, many different forms. Volunteer opportunities, food and food and blood drives that we're doing. We actually have a vaccine clinic from the Health Department on Monday. COVID and flu vaccines for free. We have a lot of programs designed for seniors, disaster relief. Shortly after I got here, we got a call from the Red Cross. There was an apartment fire and it displaced about five families. Hey, could we use the YMCA for temporary shelter? Absolutely. And I think we hosted maybe two families for a couple nights. It was wonderful. Community events, service agency partnerships. So we have partnerships funded partially by the United Way, with approximately 23 nonprofits in town that give free we give free memberships so they can use for clients. We also have discounted memberships for other agencies in town. For example, the county, we have about 35 county employees have memberships with us that get 15% off. We have it with the city. We have it with about 50 different organizations in town. Family services, parent support programs, and Healthy Kids Day, which is an annual YMCA event every spring. We invite the community into the YMCA to have activities and programs to promote healthy living for kids. And we're an inclusive space. We're a place for everyone. We our goal is to not turn anyone away for lack of ability to pay. Granted, we can't just give it away for free, but we drastically discount for those that are in financial need up to 65% off. And we want to be a place for everyone. And that is not just us. That is YMCA's across the country. So that's just a little bit about what YMCA YMCA is. But I want to highlight some of the successes that we've had just in the last couple of years. In 2023, our membership grew 16 and a half percent. COVID did a number on us as it did a lot of things. Planet Fitness also took a lot of our business away. But those that those customers have returned. And our membership is at a higher level than it was before COVID. So we have recovered from that. And then in 2024, or this current year, we are currently at 13% increase over a 16 and a half percent increase year on year. Membership is very strong. Our services, financial assistance and services in 2023 exceeded $145,000. So that's the discounted memberships I referred to. That's free. The service partnerships that we do with United Way. And our current membership is just over 5,900 members plus over 2,200 or seniors through healthcare plan memberships, Silver Sneakers, active fit, et cetera, that they get their memberships included with their healthcare health plan. And we get paid based on the number of uses that they use. So over over almost over 8,000 members in total, 5,900 that are paying. Key partnerships and community engagement, I just want to touch on some things that happened. Again, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the exciting things we have going on. We recently received funding from the state, $550,000, part of the OTSCIF funds, to help replace our dehumidifier in the window pool. The window pool is constantly in use, 25 yard, eight lane competition pool. That there are five high schools that practice and compete in it. And our Lancaster YU swim team, about 110 kids are in it. So it is busy on top of all the classes and just the open swim times that we have. That's one of two pools we have at the Sixth Avenue facility. The other one is the Fox Pool, which is the original. It was built in 1960. The window pool was built in 2000, but the dehumidifier to service that airspace, the airspace in the that room has failed. The state stepped in with that money to help us with that. They saw a need there. So that is on order. Of course, doesn't happen overnight. It's about a year wait for that. So we are making making do for the next year, but we are grateful for that funding. And we have provided, these are the local nonprofit service agencies I mentioned, 226 free memberships that have been used over 2,200 times just in the last 12 months, from July to June of 24, July of 23 to June of 24. So they're bidding, they're getting used. And we're constantly promoting that, pushing those for those agencies to use as much as possible. And I touched on before and after care. We're very excited that this fall, we have started before and after care in Bloom Carroll Elementary School and the Fairview Union Elementary Schools. So those are underway. So we have staff in place from six, starting at six in the morning until school starts, and then at three o'clock until six o'clock after school to take care of the kids that just don't that need some attention without going home to an empty house, without going to a childcare. They're in the schools. The parents drop them off at the school. They pick them up at the school. No transportation needed. So that is off to a good start and we're excited to watch that grow and potentially expand it into other outer lying school districts. Lancaster has their own after school program, so we're not affiliated with that at all. That is Lancaster School District handling that. But we want to take care of the other needs around Lancaster. Looking towards the future, we just launched a new three year strategic plan. And you have commissioners, you have a copy of that in your packet to read at your leisure. But it's it's only three years because once if you have a five year plan, once you're year two or three into it, you're it's pretty much shot. For example, we had one that just finished in 2019. And then the spring of 2020, just something like that. So that plan was basically shelved and we started new with this one. Pretty exciting. There are some aggressive things in there. We do are looking to have a capital campaign to renovate the Sixth Avenue facility. As again, that was built in 1960. The addition was added with the window pool and our beautiful wellness center in 2000. But that's 24 years old. So it needs some aesthetic renovations. We've done a lot in the last three years, redoing the parking lots, new roof over the old building, refinish the basalt floors, the dehumidifier, put a lot of investment in the building, but it needs more. So we're going to look at a capital campaign to to finish that off. With the goal is in 2027, we will be celebrating our 100th year in Lancaster and Fairview County. So 1927 was the YMCA's start. The YMCA had been in town longer, but we merged in in 1980. So as a YMCA, it'll be 100 years in 2027. But I also want to just have this question out there for anyone, and especially specifically the commissioners. What else can we do? As I mentioned, the YMCA didn't come in and say, here's what we're going to do. We want to sit back and say, how can we help? What are the needs? There may be something, there may be a need out there that we can help with. And we may not even know we can help with it until we're asked and come up with a way. There are YMCA's across the country that help with things that we don't even do. Sub housing, for example. Central Ohio has public housing. There are many, many programs that the YMCA can do and has that we can tap into to do those resources. So I'll just leave you with that. And I don't know if there's any questions, but very high level. We're very excited for the future and what we can do for not just Lancaster, but Fairview County.
Mr. President, thank you for being with us today. I appreciate your presentation. And my memory may not be accurate from like when I was 10 or something, you know, because I'm 60. So I might have some things wrong. But what I recall anyway is during the summer, when my mother and stepfather were both working, they'd drop me off at the Y. I would pay my quarter. I'd be there for the day. And then they'd pick me up at night. Other days, I might go to grandma's or somewhere else, like whatever. But most days, as I recall anyway, I'd be dropped off there to pay my quarter and play ball and dodgeball and basketball and stuff like that for the day. How does that look today?
Well, we're not seeing much of those kind of just drop off and there all day. We do have summer camp program, obviously, that a lot of families take advantage of and they're there all day with programming, but it is available to members that want to do that. That nothing's stopping them from working out, swimming, playing basketball. There's plenty to do. We're not seeing it. I've heard those stories many times of kids that just grew up there, just there all day. We don't see that as much. I don't know the reasons why. They're, you know, at home with electronics or they have other ways to.
I want to walk that a little further if I could. So if the all young, I don't really care what their age is, but if some young parents want their child to be at the Y all day on a summer day.
Yep.
Way they accomplish that is by being members.
Correct.
And is there any mechanism for a non-member to pay for that service and also have that, that I want to drop my kid off for the day's service?
They would have to come when they member. But yes, they members can also bring guests for free. They have five guest passes they can use in a year. So there are ways to do that as non-member, not as regular and routine. The main reason why we have to screen all of our members for a registered sex offender status. And so we can have guests on occasion, but they have to be with a member because of our childcare licensing, especially when we have summer camp in the building. We we need to be screening that. Now, you know, that is not a reason to stop kids from coming and being there. But within those parameters of being a guest of a member or member.
But you're I'm gathering what you're saying that in terms of, let's just say, programming, which might not be the right word. But if a membership family drops their child off at the Y on a summer day, there's not programming designed for that child. They just have the run of the Y, so to speak.
During the summer?
Yes.
No, not necessarily because of the summer camp that is there and has most of the spaces occupied. There are things that on a, you know, from session to session, there might be an hour here or an hour there, or there might be, it's probably more like in the evening where there'd be youth programming, because that's summer camp leaves and then opens up spaces for them.
One last comment if I might, Mr. President. So in terms of your question to the community, so to speak, the commission has spent a tremendous amount of time and money on addressing impediments that working families are experiencing. We're attempting to address that from skills standpoint. Do they have the skills they need to get to work?
Right.
Trying to sort that out through workforce center. We're on the eve of developing some additional transit plans. How are they getting back and forth to work? We're working on housing solutions for folks who are in that basket, so to speak. If we were to select a fourth impediment after skills, housing, and transportation, who would be childcare in terms of what want to work are experiencing as an impediment to work?
Yep.
And so not just you, but wherever we go.
Yeah.
We're communicating concern about what we would describe as the fourth impediment.
Yeah, we've heard that many times over. We we can offer childcare, but we're limited as well. Now, we're not full, and I'm going to be pushing to increase those opportunities. But that includes just parents dropping their kids off possibly. But they have to be older than, you know, 13 or over to be in the building by themselves as a member. They can't be nine years old and just running around the building without without someone that is 13 or older. But it's an option. It's not a great option for those kids, to be honest. But that's we may certainly look at that and look at programming. If that's something that you're saying is push kids here, we will have things in place for them.
I think if I might, Mr. President, I've checked out the responsibility for solving that problem on the Y.
Oh, yeah. We want to help. We want to be a resource.
Question whether there's of the building to all participate and solve a problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, absolutely.
So in addition to especially the childcare aspect, what is your capacity?
For childcare?
For childcare, yes.
Currently, we have preschool ages three to five in our Sixth Avenue facility. We have one classroom right now, but we have three rooms that we are looking to expand into to have more childcare. We have a transition right now of our director. And we have a partnership that we're getting ready to announce that will partner with the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide guidance and supervision for us. But it'll greatly expand our capacity to have those those rooms full.
So this past week, the Gazette actually did an article regarding childcare and the cost there. That's a major impediment to the annual cost of about $12,000. Some were in excess of $10 per hour. And so that's a big deal.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to do whatever you can.
Oh, yeah, we have the discount programs that we already offer. Plus, we also work with our family services and we are four star rated with JFS in that, which will now be gold. Golds or bronze will be the ratings and will be gold. So we can provide funding for those families in need. We have a lot of children that are in our care that are getting state assistance via the after care programs, summer camp, or preschool. So we can be that place for those families. That's what we're there for. It's not to make a profit, you know, you know, make all kinds of money on families and kids. We want to be that resource for them to.
Yeah, so I had a chance to sit down and talk a few weeks ago. Really impressed. And we are working on course development and housing and transportation. And we all know that daycare is the next thing. We're starting to kind of work through that. You know, what that looks like and how we can pull different groups together to help with that. So certainly appreciate your willingness to be a part of the solution down the road. You know, my general thought is when a place has been a part of the community for 100 years, you know, there's probably an opportunity for it to just be taken for granted and it just kind of exists, right? And the thing that I came away with from meeting a few weeks ago was the the energy and the enthusiasm and the push to really reinvigorate the YMCA and to take it to a new level. And, you know, you've got a tremendously interesting background. And I think that that will help you move this thing forward. So I'm excited for the future of the Y. I'm excited for your leadership there. And, you know, anything we as commissioners can do, you know, as you've asked us, what can you do to help? Or I'll ask you the same thing. What can we do to help you? So really appreciate you being here. Really generally appreciate all that you do out there.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. And one thing I also say is not only do we have our facility in our childcare, as we've done with our before and after care programs, we can do it outside of our facility. So if there's a, I've mentioned to Rick very briefly, like if there's a need for us to offer childcare at the workforce center, just an idea or something along those lines, we can be a satellite. We can come to places to offer the services. It doesn't have to be in our confines of the Sixth Avenue facility.
Another question I wanted to ask if I might is you may mention a capital campaign near term.
Yep.
I'm just curious as to when that, if that hasn't already begun, when that begins? And if you have a target, a budget and all that?
We are working through that right now. The sensitivity we have is I realize there are other entities in town doing capital campaigns right now. I know the resources are limited. With the United Way, we are, yes. However, our board of directors is looking through options, researching and having the analysis done of exactly not how much to raise, but to how much to raise for what? Like, how are we going to renovate the building to meet programming needs? Expanded childcare, you know, something else? We don't know. And so we're exploring all those preparatory steps in order for we to actually launch a campaign. You could argue that we've already launched a quiet phase of the campaign because we've got 550,000 towards the dehumidifier, which is going to be a big part of our campaign. My guess, if we were to renovate and do things, it's anywhere between three and $5 million. That could be low. That could be high. But we haven't done those exploratory findings with architects yet. We haven't engaged with one yet to get the answers to know exactly. Let's just raise $5 million and renovate. Let's do it specifically for what we want to do. And that way it might be, oh, we only need two and a half. Oh, no, you need eight. We don't know that yet.
Anyway, you know, and we're thankful to our state legislators, Jeffrey Wright and Senator Shaver and Kevin Miller.
Yep.
Being very proactive in helping. Hopefully, they can provide additional help.
Yes, yeah, they all visited the facility individually. That was a huge part of getting their support for that dehumidifier. And they're they're very helpful, very supportive.
So on a side note, we we have our own Cory Clark and Emily Hordle.
Yep.
Sure run our board as well, so.
Very excited to have each of them on the board. They'll bring tremendous resources and insight and knowledge to help us accomplish our goals.
The other final question. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, thanks for that. Thank you very much.
As you're going about having these kinds of conversations, let's just say for purposes of discussion, if we're shouting childcare, what's the second you're hearing or have you gotten that part yet? After childcare, is there another chorus of battle calls for end this? What's end this?
Childcare is 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 over presounding one right now. I would say there's a bunch of smaller ones that are, for example, obesity, just healthiness in the community. Engagement, a lot of isolation, specifically in the senior population, just be in that place for them. Have the capacity to offer more programs or things like that. Do more things that that people want. For example, we don't, I don't want to work out, but I want to come and engage in something. Maybe that's a walking club, it's a hiking club. And just expanding our program offerings to do to provide things that the people want. But childcare is by far and away the biggest area of the.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
You don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I know you want to, but I'm also sure you're quite willing to.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. So we have with us today Scott Brown from the State Auditor's Office. And I understand Scott has an award. Is that correct?
I do. Yes, I do have an award today. So thank you for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda. My name is Scott Brown. I serve as the state auditor, the I serve state auditor Keith Faber as his Central Ohio liaison. And as many of you in this room know, that means that hopefully I'm the first person you call and will give a question from the state auditor's office. It's my honor to be here today on behalf of auditor Faber to present the to present Fairfield County Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This award puts your organization in a very select group. We of our 6,000 clients statewide, we audit nearly 4,200 of those annually. And just 4% of those those audits qualify for this award. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and other entities upon the completion of a financial audit that meet these criteria to be considered a clean audit report or as many of you know, a short letter from our office. The entity must file financial reports with the auditor's office by a statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report does not contain any findings from recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or other questioning costs. Bringing through government speed, what this award represents is the hard work of all of Fairfield County's staff and employees who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. We'd like to recognize the administration and the finance office that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar. What this truly means is across your entire organization, you have the people and the processes in place that understand fiscal accountability. Specifically, we want to recognize County Auditor Carrie Brown for her leadership, professionalism, and exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. So on behalf of Auditor Keith Faber, I'd like to present the Fairfield County, I would like to present Fairfield County with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And so we'll be doing a photo op above. But in the meantime, Dr. Brown, if you could please come forward.
Thank you to Scott for coming to Fairfield County to present this award on behalf of auditor Keith Faber. Also want to say thank you to every elected official and department head for their leadership, their dedication to financial stewardship. Most importantly, to our finance team, I'd like for Beth Hoskinson to join me. That is our financial systems director. She has more than three decades of experience in the state and local offices. And she is a tremendous asset to Fairfield County. I'm so glad that she's part of our team. We are reaching out to all of our stakeholders and doing a lot of education and outreach, particularly with our Making Numbers County Financial Leadership Academy. And it is Beth's leadership that is moving that along and promoting it. And I appreciate that very much. So we expect many more of these to come along with the many more that we've had in the past and appreciate this long history of financial stewardship.
Please join yourself. One, two, three. One, two, three. So we've reached the point of our meeting where we allow public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium and give your name and address. And you are limited to three minutes. Who would like to be first?
Thanks for having us. My name is Ed Walland. I live in Muskingham County. I've been a resident of Ohio for 37 years. We're volunteers, not spokespersons with United Sovereign Americans. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide volunteer organization for thousands of active volunteers. United Sovereign Americans' highly credentialed national data team has gathered data showing alarming discrepancies in our state's database. Using only official data provided by our state elections officials of the 2022 election. Our audit shows that 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We're not saying one candidate won over another that any election should be overturned. It's simply that the state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes is counted. is counted, were not all valid and accurate under existing law. While the numbers are staggering, one thing's clear, they don't add up. The auditor knows about making numbers add up. Next, we'll read you a resolution for a legally valid 2024 election. The summary of findings and request for investigation has already been shared with state election officials and law enforcement, and we just want elected officials to understand these issues and that they need to be taken seriously. So, a resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election, whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Quote, "And the right of suffrage can be denied by debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of a franchise." That's from Reynolds v. Sims. And whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion and manipulation, quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote. That's from In Ray Cloy. And whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld: the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993; votes counted must be from eligible voters, according to U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2; the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted; and fourth, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system in accordance with the Health and Ameri Vote Act 2020.
Please conclude your remarks.
My name is Hannah Moore, I live in Muskingham County and have been a resident here all my life. Continuing on, whereas an open source audit of the Ohio 2022 general election conducted by Ohio state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 1,046,431 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Ohio State Voter Rule database, 602,631 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 1,162,079 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election at the time of certification. No one knows who cast them, 713,262 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election, maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Ohio is 34. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and not legal. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without errors. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an infringement of the civil rights of the citizens, fraud, amicio, United States v. Throckmorton, 1878. Quote, "From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates," United States, end quote, United States v. Classic, 1921. Whereas, Ohio's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government that duly and prudently chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabrics of each United States.
My name is Cheryl Phevis, I live in Muskingham County and have been a resident of Ohio for over 21 years. To continue with the resolution, therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that holds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot imaging, and CVRs, or cast vote records. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including audibility and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a NIST or National Institute Standards and Transmissions compliant randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of all unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by manual handicap and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed, only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Thank you.
Ma'am, could I have your full address, please, besides Muskingham County?
I'm sorry?
Your full address.
Yes, 956 Taylor Street in Zanesville, Ohio.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Thompson, I live in Muskingham County and have been a resident of Ohio all my life. You have just heard a powerfully written resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. The resolution outlined massive inaccuracies from our 2022 election, from registration through certification. It asks for meaningful remedies to proactively protect our civil rights by having a valid 2024 general election for all Americans. The resolution cited many United States Supreme Court presidents that support the need for such actions. Existing election laws should not be ignored. Bottom line, just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes, but that's not happening. The system that controls our most important right to choose our representatives is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Our election system, which is part of our national security infrastructure, can't continue to be ignored. Americans have a civil right to a free, fair, and legally valid election. The resolution demands this by applying and enforcing existing voter laws. The cost to not fix the problem is immeasurable, so I encourage you to support upholding the voter laws by signing this resolution and voting yank. The United Sovereign Americans website, United for Freedom, showcases our nationwide initiatives and has very informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found in Ohio and other states in our country. The website is unite, the number four, freedom.com. I encourage you to learn more about United Sovereign Americans at unitedforfreedom.com. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, please?
Sherri Pymer, 3464 South Bank Road, Wallah Township. Of course, we're still fighting against the big solar project, Eastern Cotton Tail, and the clock is ticking. Today, I'm going to present to you some additional petitions that we have signed. On these petitions are, we've got over 300 people from Fairfield County signing the petitions. In addition to that, we've got 345 or so from outside Fairfield County, but in Licking, Perry, and the, you know, surrounding areas that are also against industrial solar. But what that also means is that people that stop by our booth at some of these festivals, 345 or 346 people were from outside the area, so we have a lot of people coming in to visit Fairfield County. And there's a reason for that, it's because of Fairfield County. They like the country, they like the small-town feel, they like the festivals, they, I mean, Fairfield County gives people a reason to visit, and we want to keep it that way. And by bringing in big industrial solar, taking up valuable farmland, and also future development areas around the small villages, that's where the expansion is according to our land use plan, which is the way it should be. And I know Commissioner Fix has worked really hard at this for the last year or two, and everybody appreciates it. And I go to a lot of the village meetings and the township, or the township meetings, and they do appreciate it, and they are coming along. And I don't, you probably already know that one of the villages has been contacted by an attorney that has a landowner who wants to annex into that village because they want to put solar on it, because they know that they can't do it by the township since it's unincorporated and we have an exclusionary zone. So, this is the way they're trying to work their way around, is by going into places who don't have, you know, the additional zoning for that. I'm going to give these to Rochelle.
Again, we're asking for you to sign a letter of opposing Eastern Cotton Tail because you do have the authority to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, please? Good, thank you all for coming. Anything else?
Unless you, anybody has questions?
Any administrative updates, Ani?
All right. Just a reminder, Fairfield County offices will be closed this Friday. We will be encouraging all of our folks to go out and celebrate the Fairfield County Fair. Tomorrow, we will hold our employee benefits fair at the Record Center from 12 to 5. It's an opportunity for employees to obtain information or ask questions about our benefits program, and employees can also choose to have a biometric screening or get a flu shot provided by FMC. So thanks to HR and our partners at FMC for helping us out with that. We also wanted to share good news about a training grant that economic development did recently engage in with Rush Creek. Rick, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so Rush Creek Theme Supply is located in Bremen, they've been there 60 years, they're part of the independent boys. They're a successful small business in the county that serves our agriculture community, and we're providing a $10,000 training grant for them to get some of their employee CDL licenses. So, great opportunity to help Bremen, they're a robust business, businesses out in Bremen, so it's great to help some of these smaller communities.
Awesome, and I also understand, I think there's some exploration going on at the engineer's office with folks being able to provide CDL training for folks. Have we moved any, I'm looking at both Jason and Jeremiah here, do we have any additional information to share on that?
We are set up, and we are kind of, you know, in the stages of learning our way through what we're doing, kind of dot the i's and cross the k's, but we are a testing, or training facility, I'm sorry.
Awesome, and thank you for your willingness to explore that and make that an opportunity there, it is definitely needed.
It's becoming a necessity for us to be able to get, continue to get qualified applicants, the number of applicants with the CDL that also have the construction experience, we're getting kind of thin, so we had to open the doors up somehow.
Awesome, well, thank you very much. All right, highlights of resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 23 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting today, a few that I will point out for you. There is a resolution to set a viewing and hearing date to determine the necessity to establish, alter, or widen a culvert on Stringtown Road. We have a resolution to vacate an alley in Walnut Township. The viewing and hearing for this petition were held on September 24th and October 1st respectively. This vacation is for an unnamed alley in the Taylors Sandy Beach area. We also have a resolution approving CS-19, which sets forth responsible parties during the proposed project, and CS-17, which is the cooperative agreement, and these are all relating to the 33 Pickerington Road project. And then we do have a resolution to vacate a portion of Allen Road for the 33 Pickerington Road project. This was tabled last week, and you can motion to table that again, or actually act on the resolution when we come to the voting meeting. There's a resolution to approve a contract between the Commissioners and Wheels on Wheels ordered alternatives of Fairfield County to set forth respective duties in connection with the operation of Wheels on Wheels and the funding and provision of services pursuant to the levy. And then lastly, there are two resolutions related to fees. The first is to adjust the fees for the five types of annexations, which the commissioners may have to consider, and the second is to establish a fee to file a road vacation, asking the commissioners for consideration on these resolutions so that the costs will match up with the legal notices and required mailings that we have to do with that. Right now, they are coming in significantly lower than those costs that we experienced. Post-COVID, we have found that the legal advertising has significantly jumped, and this is allowed as per the Highway Vice Code. And Bert, I think your budget review begins this afternoon with budget meetings, right?
Yes, moving forward.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Rochelle, calendar review invitations received?
All right, the annual meeting of CTAO Energy Program Committee will be October 16th, then the CTAO Board Agreement, 2:00 on East State Street in Columbus. The Wagon's Memorial Library will have a ribbon playing for the new audio and video studio on October 16th at 4:00 p.m. in Lytopolis. This studio will be available to the public for the Hospital Library party. The Ohio Mates Job Script of Fairfield County Job Fair will be held at the Workforce Center on October 17th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Fairfield Medical Center Foundation will host the Red Heart Gala on October 25th from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Wagon's Memorial Library in Lytopolis. The CTAO CEAO Youth Center Conference will be December 4th through 6th at the Columbus Center in downtown Columbus. And MCJBC sent the commissioners an invitation for their holiday happiness event, which will be held at the facility on December 19th from 10:00 p.m. until 12:30.
Could you copy that for me, please?
Absolutely, thank you. The commissioners received the following correspondence, a flyer on the Community Action and Fund Bus Adventure Stupit Rami Food Drive, which will run from November 16th to December 5th. The flyer contains an email address and schedule for pickup if you'd like to participate, a letter from Post Consumer Brands regarding updates to employee separation, an email from a resident regarding engine brakes on State Route 188, the CTAO County Spotlight on October 1st contained an article titled "Life of Fairfield Public Transit Becomes Official Fairfield County Department." From the Office of the County Auditor, we have an October 7th press release titled "Fairfield County Auditor Updates, Letty Estimator Tool and Fact Sheets for November 5th Election." The county auditor also provided a memo regarding weights and measures outreach and a new fact sheet, and a Wednesday lead. Fishers received additional correspondence invitations from four H's regarding Fairfield County Fairs, livestock sales. They also received correspondence regarding industrial solar projects, an email from Julie Graham Price from the Ohio Power Side More Community of the A-Zon regarding. OPSB issuing Eastern Cotton Tail Solar a Letter of Complacency. A letter from Carnation Solar regarding a public meeting on October 10th at 5:00 p.m. at the Manded Big Creek High School auditorium. A newsletter from the county's Environmental Stewardship Committee and a newsletter from Visit Fairfield County. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. Commissioner, I do have one more item. Wanted to point out that we have one of the transit buses out at the fairgrounds, and we are down to the final three choices for branding the bus. Fairfield County Connect, Fairfield County Ride, and Fairfield County Link. So we are asking folks to vote on one of those three items, and they can do it via social media to get the... Stop looking.
I'm asking for a write-in on Fairfield Area Regional Transit. I think that is best of all opportunities. Who wants to name it? Bart?
Powered by National Gas.
So Link, Ride, or Connect are your three options to choose from?
I did.
And we were out there yesterday. It's kind of like a touch-a-truck kind of event as well. Kids are hopping on the transit bus for what the community to be able to see what transit looks like and how they too could take advantage of that if they had that need. So thanks to Rick and Aaron and the rest of the team, and especially Bennett, because Bennett was the one that got everything set up for the fair, so.
Mr. Davis, any other?
Yes, if I might, Mr. President. Had the opportunity to attend the CCAO and CEAO regional meeting Friday, Champaign County. I desperately did not want to go. And I was certain I wouldn't learn a thing. But it turned out that I was very happy. I went, and I didn't come across a question that I think we could maybe take a look at, John. There was some discussion at that meeting regarding another round jail funding. It included state budgetary process, which I'm not concerned about that another round. But it was also suggested that there may still be funding available under the existing round jail funding. And I found myself wondering whether our proposed fence at the jail site, whether that may or may not qualify under the existing jail funding grant opportunities. And so what I'm suggesting in that regard is, I know we're... The train's left the station, so to speak, in terms of getting that project moving, but I almost find myself wondering if the train could be slowed down until a determination is made regarding availability or lack thereof of funding in that regard for that project.
Sure, we can get that answer quickly.
And so anyway, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, the county we went to, Champaign County, smaller population, smaller government, but what they do with what they have to work with, I was pretty impressed by that. So shout out to our colleagues in Champaign County in that regard. Last note under old business, really, really well-attended fair opening yesterday, and got the opportunity to kind of travel about a little bit and visit a number of sites at the fairgrounds. Again, probably wasn't... I was happy to be there. Thank you.
Yeah, so continuing to meet with villages and townships on their land use plans and zoning and cooperative economic development agreements. Last week, we had Walnut Township in Millersport, Walnut Township in Thurston. We went to... Today, we have Greenfield and Lancaster, and this afternoon, we have... Last week, Holly and Tony and I got to go to Pleasant Township. They're working on their first land use plan and revising their zoning, which hasn't been revised in decades. And I have to, you know, we always give a shout-out to the folks who are doing this, but the amount of work that Holly and her team are doing to help all these folks get their zoning up to date and get their maps done, I don't know if you're keeping track of the hours, but it's got to be a ton. Because every meeting we go to, Holly volunteers, her team, to make it happen. And really, without that, there's no way we could do that. So just a huge thanks to Holly. And also, in every meeting we go to, Tony knows where all the pipes are buried and can very easily and quickly give answers as to what's possible, what might be possible, and what's not possible. And that clarity really helps folks figure out where they should look to add development to their part of the county and where they should not. And so this really makes that all a lot smoother. So thank you, Tony, and your team as well. So we'll continue to push forward with all that. Last Tuesday night, so nine months ago, I asked the CCAO at one of the board meetings to put together what I called an intel caucus, basically a group of counties that could share, you know, best practices or what have impacts when an intel is dropped in their county or next door, or a Honda plant is dropped in their county or in the area. And so we had a really good dinner with one of the top people from the Governor's Development Office, from the State Economic Development Association, and from the State Chamber of Commerce, and county commissioners from six different counties, and a number of folks from CCAO. We had this meeting in Pickerington. Over dinner, it was a great two-and-a-half-hour conversation with more to come. And just, I guess it shows the value of CCAO, that they're able to pull people from all these different areas together to, you know, figure out how we can all work together to maximize what happens, you know, take most advantage of what happens when these once-in-a-lifetime opportunities present themselves. So I have old business.
Keep Benny.
Yes. Had a couple meetings this morning. One was with Clerk of Reports Brandon Meyer. And what we were doing is just thinking about some space utilization issues at the Hall of Justice and how things might be viewed up a little differently in a couple of areas. It's probably premature for me at this point to get too far down the road on some of those ideas. I think there's some other folks we want to communicate with to just kind of run that up the flagpole and see how that might get sorted out. But stay tuned on that issue. It's not a... I don't want to allude to any kind of major, you know, thing. It's a small thing. But anytime you move something around in the Hall of Justice or make any changes, a fairly large number of people take an interest in that. So we want to make sure we're being sensitive to that issue there. Then the other thing I just wanted to mention is I did have a meeting with Bart this morning also, disregarding budgeting process and the out years and the timing of when or if and how we would address some trouble in those medium-term years. And I'll be advocating a point of view on that throughout the budgeting process. Thank you, Mr. President.
I want to circle back to old business. I just remembered something also when... Something gone in... I should think I alluded to it, Champaign County. And one of the officials spoke about Mark's cars gone. And they're in the process of either building one or completing one. And they were pretty proud of that and because, you know, of communications and the need thereof. And, you know, I wanted to say, yeah, well, we got two of them here in Champaign County, right? But one of the things they brought up was that they actually own that superstructure, and they actually rent space to other entities, like cell phone and so on and so forth. I didn't know if that was an option for us, or is that excluded because of the ownership?
There is an option at Millersport Site Location, because that was a ground-up build. Now, our tower that we handed over to the state, it's a much smaller tower. It did work for the Mark system, but it really can't handle much of the weight on that tower. It was built to the standard of the Miller's Tower. And I believe Marks has had some interaction with vendors.
I would think so. But that may be an option worth looking at because there's a substantial amount of money involved.
And isn't that why we put water towers, so we can put cell stuff on top of it?
You have to ask Tony on that. But, yeah, I mean, when we enter that into agreement so that we don't have to maintain that tower, it becomes Mark's direction control. You know, so the Millersport Tower is an agreement with the village and township. We don't own. You did provide the equipment. You purchased the equipment to operate on that tower. It's doing an amazing job. The new tower just went online and doing it.
But if they rented, if space were to be rented on that tower for some other use, money would go to someone other than us. Is that what you're saying?
We wouldn't have to worry about it though. At Water Works, it cannot support any more on that tower. That Mark's not going to be running off because of looking. At Millersport, it's outside of our control. It's possible.
Thank you. Anyway, just food for the pot, right? Mr. Fix?
Yeah, new business. So not this Friday, but next Friday, the 18th of October, injection with the CCAO, we will be hosting a Central Region, I'm calling a Housing Symposium, getting county commissioners, economic development folks, housing folks together at the Wigwam to talk about the housing fronts that we're all experiencing around central Ohio and we can do to improve that situation. So Lieutenant Governor's going to come out and say a few words of encouragement. Kenny McDonald, One Columbus, will be there to tell people, you know, what the projections are for growth. Morpsy will be there to do the same thing. We've got a panel with the BIA, Planning Next, and myself, and somebody else that I'm forgetting right now. Basically, it's a three-hour program designed to talk commissioners and others through kind of what we've been doing here for the past couple of years, in the hopes that if everybody's kind of pulling in the same direction, maybe we'll be able to loosen things up and get some houses.
So at 3 o'clock Saturday, after budget hearings have concluded, I'll be meeting with Director Baldridge. He's the Director of Agriculture for the State, meeting him at the fair. And he'll have the opportunity to see Fairfield County and our wonderful fair. Last fair, that's... Bonson.
Good morning. This past Thursday, the Director's Office issued our banking services to resolve for your contract that will commence February 1st of next year, 2025. Other than that, we're just business as usual. Just a quick note, I made some comments last week that's happened in Western North Carolina, also Tennessee, Georgia, now Florida's going to get hit again. So definitely keep those folks in your prayers. And if you're able to, please donate to a qualified charity that's helping in those areas. Thank you.
How is your son?
They're fine. They're quote-unquote, their neighborhood's back to normal. But there's just... The project ahead is immense. It's just hard to imagine. But they're doing fine. Thank you for asking.
The one that potentially could hit Florida, the area they're talking about is about three feet above sea level, and they're talking about potentially a 15-foot storm surge. So it could be beyond catastrophic. Yes, Jeremiah?
Well, I mean, factful that not dealing with that here, but I agree with you. Let's keep committing our prayers. They certainly need it. Anything we can do to help is huge down here. Can goods, donations, whatever, it all goes along with us. Other than that, we're still buttoning up our last handful of construction projects. What we did on Refugee Road seems to be panning out really well. Things are functioning well, so we're very happy with that. Getting ready for snow and ice, as which hopefully we don't have a whole lot of, but we'll be ready for what comes. We started construction on the Salt Barn. Again, appreciate the support on that. Got some more information for y'all later on today on that. That's really all I have right now.
If I may, Jeremiah, you mentioned Refugee Road, and as someone who travels that road every day, I can tell you that the changes there have made a significant positive impact on how people move through that part of the community. And, you know, I was hopeful that it would be really cool when it was done. It flew away my expectations. So thank you to you and your team for at least setting that up a little bit, because, man, I was tougher.
Appreciate that. It's always a relief with something big like that, when it actually comes out the way of the numbers and the theory that we're using to do it works correctly.
Mr. President, if I might, a couple of folks here mentioned the storm situation in the south there. And I wonder, John, if the communications you get from an emergency management standpoint, is there like a all-hands-on-deck messaging that goes out to emergency management agencies across the country saying, we need this, we need that, we could use small teams of people to do this, or we need these supplies? Are you receiving those kinds of messages?
Exactly that, actually. And that's called EMAC, Emergency Management Assistance Contract. And actually, last night, I was sending out our alert for Ohio. My Run Ohio team, I don't go anymore, but we did put out, and I have about six directors already this morning saying, there are deployments in the next four weeks, above the two weeks. And that's our team. That's how our team works.
When you say deployment, you're talking about administrative deployment, people with gloves on moving stuff around?
Yeah, we're globally used. So we will go into Lake Oakley. You'll see, I spent some time in North Carolina a few years back. We just go into that environment. There's IMT incident management teams. We're pointing to the city of Columbus Fire. And then the upper echelon is the Ohio Task Force One, and they've obviously been deployed. They're still on deployment. They'll just turn around back to Florida because they started off in Florida. So that's the system. I mean, it's multi-level, but it's all under one thing called Emergency Management Assistance Contract.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeremiah, you know, as we saw the destruction of all those roads, can you imagine? It's beyond belief, right?
I don't know how you deal with that much destruction. I mean, it takes away everything that you're using, all your options and everything above. It's... To pray and try to do the right thing at every step.
Heartbreaking, especially around Asheville, the destruction. So Brandon, you actually visited Tennessee.
Yeah, so my family just got back from a family funeral in eastern Tennessee. Luckily, our family was okay. They just don't have water and don't have power. But a mile from my uncle's house, there's a bridge, and it's okay, but it was shut down for a while until they inspected it. So it's fine. But it's like total devastation a mile from his house. So my family's lucky that I'm just a mile away. And then further east, I mean, it is... We drove over to see the bridge, and it was over a river. The river looks like a lumberyard. I mean, it is just trees and trees just piled. You know, you saw pieces of homes, barns that had floated down the river from miles and miles away that were there. But it's just, it's really... They need donations. They need prayers. I just don't even know where people restart.
...is pulling together and fighting donations to Red Cross. That was John's suggestion from last week. Brandon just shared with me that there's going to be a push to, of course, cleaning supplies. I think that's a good thing to do as well. Ever Making Numbers Count seminar on October 16th. We will, 2025, be organizing the Financial Leadership Academy. Very excited. Very excited about those things. And in addition to that, next month, you're going to hear a little bit more about some promotion and efforts around notaries. I know that's something that Brandon had some thoughts about in the past. We want to be able to make ourselves even more available than we are now. We do get referrals from the clerk of courts office and others. And we're available to provide that free service. And then finally, I just wanted to mention about the fair. Here's some fun facts. More than 1,100 animals will be weighed on 14 scales. And Patrick Brighton and Carter Corcoran are doing a tremendous job. They have countless hours into the certification of the scales as well as being available at all hours, day and night. And I'm very proud of them, the work that they're doing. But 1,100 animals. It's quite a few.
All the information that's in ERP sorted, quoted our A and watch. It's going to be a great tool. My office and many others to be able to manage that data.
Okay, so real quick, anyone else down the line? We're running a little short on time. Rick always has something to say about that. Good. Sue, please rise if you're able to fly me into the public. If you don't like the announcements?
There are no announcements.
Mr. President, on the announcement front, I'd, you folks may or may not be aware, but I have an obligation the morning of October 15th that is unavoidable. And I will get through that as quickly as I can and return here as soon as possible. But it's a lock that I will miss the voting pattern that morning. And the timing of my arrival for the budget hearings on the 15th is to be determined. Thank you, Mr. President.
So approval minutes for October 1st, 2024. Samud.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Minutes past three zero from the Commissioners Resolution 2024-10.8.a. A resolution to set a commissioner's viewing date November 12th, 2024, 12:30 PM, and a hearing date of November 19th, 2024, 7:30 PM, to determine the necessity to establish alter and or widen Stringtown Road, Greenfield Township and Fairfield County.
Fairfield County Commissioners, I mean, items A, B, and C.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President, if I may, typically, I think we made a mistake, but typically these go under the engineers' resolutions, viewing hearings, and it ended up on here. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if it's an issue or not.
So noted. Additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Commissioners Resolution 2024-10.8.d. A resolution approving a vacation request to vacate a portion of Allen Road, Violet Township.
A motion remove this from the table?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
The motion has been, or the resolution has been removed from the table.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion.
So had some conversations with Jeremiah and Tony over the past week, who have been in communication with ODOT. We're trying to negotiate a better deal with them on how they're impacting the land that they need to deal with or take to get the Pickerington interchange up and running. Those conversations are ongoing. They've asked us to provide this vacation so that they can keep the project moving forward, knowing that we still need to conclude those negotiations at some point down the road. All can say that this does not minimize or reduce our negotiating situation. So I'm asking that we do this for today so we can get the Pickerington Road interchange, keep it on track.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Commissioners Resolution 2024-10.8.e. A resolution to approve a contract between Fairfield County Board of Commissioners and Meals on Wheels, older dollar alternatives of Fairfield County.
Your commissioners, I mean, items E, F, G, and H.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for the Fairfield County Auditor, Resolution 2024-10.8.i. A resolution approving an account to account transfer into a major expenditure object category. Fund 1001.
Under Fairfield County Auditor Finance, I mean, items I and J.
Second.
Discussion.
The first resolution is to properly classify expenditures for our next training. And the second one is the traditional allocation of PWC costs.
Additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution 2024-10.8.k. A resolution to approve a reimbursement for sheriff costs for even up services paid to AT&amp;T as a memo expenditure for Fund 26.
Samud. Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution 2024-10.8.l. A resolution approving an account to account transfer into a major expenditure object category. Fund 2002.
For Fairfield County Dog Shelter, I mean, items L and M.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2024-10.8.n. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated into a major expenditure object category for EMA Fund 2091, Local Emergency Planning Committee Fire Training.
Samud. Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion pass three zero for the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024-10.8.o. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category. Fund 2024, Motor Vehicle for Repairs and Maintenance.
For Fairfield County Engineer, I mean, items O, P, Q, and R.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to say thanks to the auditor's office for all the help on getting the TID set up to where we are now. We've kind of entered into a new realm of doing business. Giving that thing along, I want to say thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-10.8.s. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Fairfield County GFS Fund 2599, Workforce Fund.
Under Job and Family Services, I mean, items S and T.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy? Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024-10.8.u. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Sheriff's Office Fund 2027, Ways.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff, I mean, items U and V.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy? Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-10.8.w. Resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for Department of Sydney Board of Commissioners.
Samud. Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
So we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel issues. And after, after that executive session, we'll be returning, starting the budget hearing, starting at 11 o'clock. Any additional items coming forward to the Board of Commissioners at this time? Jared, we can't do this right now.
Um, you mean talking about this symposium coming up on housing? And I think I brought this up when I was going there. They have like, and I just recently read for some place, I think it's in the region. They have like, I need home loan. I just think that there are so many people that are in your single or just one apartment. But that was really benefit.
Trust me, Matt, I tell you, Sherry, that every single housing option is being explored to the utmost. And I appreciate you bringing it up.
Commissioner Davis, uh?
Yeah, I need a primer on the guest list. I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues in that session. I'd like to have the commissioners, county administrator, deputy county administrator, representatives from prosecutor's office and clerks and representatives from engineer's office and outside counsel.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.